Okay, I have seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And first, I'm gonna give everybody a friendly reminder, please turn off your cellphones, or put them on airplane mode, or silent, so that they don't disrupt the meeting. And then next, I'd like to ask that you join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with that, welcome everybody here this evening. This is the regular city council meeting of November 6th. I'm gonna start out with introductions. We have on the end, let's see, I'll start with that end as soon as Mr. Falls sits down. So we have, taking his seat, our Chief of Police, Paul Falls. Next to him, sitting in for Ron Beatty is our Attorney, Andrew Biggerstaff. And then we have Community Development Director, David Abel. And Brian Grimm is our Finance Director, Mike Barone is our Administrator. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the Mayor. And to my left are Council Members, Patricia Thol, Pam Mortensen, Mike Molitor, Shannon Roos. And on the end, we have our City Engineer, Paul Hornby with WSB. And then we have our City Clerk, Chris Lindquist. And then Cassandra Taylor, who is our Director of Administration. So with that, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? What I'm gonna suggest, we have a couple people signed up under Persons to be Heard, so I'm gonna suggest that we take Item 3 and move it up to 2, and move 2 down to 3. So we just switch those two. So with that, is there a motion to make, to approve the agenda with those changes?
Some would.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So we'll start with Persons to be Heard, and we have Tom Notch. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, I'm Tom Notch, I live at 1250 Morning View Drive. And I just wanted to check in with you guys. I know, it was a number of years ago, the city was looking at rebidding the professional services, you know, in particular with WSB, the Civil Engineer, and also with the Attorney. And at the time, they decided not to really rebid it at that time, because they're in the middle of the water project, and they thought it wasn't a good time to do it. And I wanted to encourage you guys to rebid that at this time. I think it's been at least 10 years since those items were bid out. I'm not sure what the total has been that WSB has been getting compensated, but I know other years it was over a million bucks a year. So it's a fair amount of money, and it's worth looking at. I think too, that our city's growing, and there may be some merit in us having our own Civil Engineer, and I'm a professional engineer, I've been one for a long time. And there's some economy in having your own engineer on staff, and then letting them bid out the projects, the way it is right now. In summary, it could be that we kind of have the wolf guard eating chicken coop. So I think if we could look at that, I think it'd be a very good thing to do. As far as, I was wondering too, before, there's looking at WSB, I know in some other towns and that, from emails, where they were giving out tickets to football games and things, and golf outings, and that. And I was just curious, does Minotrisa have some rule on not allowing for city council members or staff accepting gifts from vendors? Would be a question. If you do, I'd like a copy of it. So that was just one thing, super quick. And then, as far as the city campus, I sent an email out, you know, to all of the people at the council, and Mike was good enough to reply, and Shannon had been in contact with her, but I haven't heard from the rest of you. I just wanted to make sure, first of all, that you got my email?
Yep.
Okay. And if it seemed to me, if you at least respond that you got it, it'd be a good thing to do, it wouldn't take long, so people know that they're at least being heard, because I didn't have a clue if you got it or not. And then I just wanted to say too, I think it was a mistake to purchase some of the parcels we brought out here, but let's not compound that mistake by building facilities just to justify the expenditure that we had on the land. You know, that's done, so we can't bring that back, but I just wanna be careful in that regard. And then, I understand there's a survey that they're going over tonight. And it's my understanding that was $19,000 that was allocated for preparing the survey of 400 residents. Doing quick math, I'm a math guy, it's $47.50 per one you've surveyed. And I talked to people that had the survey done, and it was like 15 minutes to 20, you know, at the most. So you do the math on that, it's about $150 bucks an hour. I know before, when the city did a survey on the water usage, to see which way we should go, and that's the one where the Survey Monkey, and that's something that the city can do for free. And I'd like to think that we could be creative and do that again here. And personally, I don't like seeing a fair amount of our resources, 19K in this regard, going to conducting the survey, when we've got roads, like the one in front of our house on Morning View Drive, and they seem all over, that are really in need of repair. I think our resources could be allocated better than paying for a survey, which we could conduct ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Notch. You've gone, exceeded the three minutes, so thank you for your comments.
If you're interested, any other things I have to say?
No, it says we have a three-minute limit, so we're trying-
There's not a lot of people here tonight.
Okay, well, I'll give you another minute, okay?
Perfect, I just love that anyway, Lisa, but I thank you for that.
Madam Mayor, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, okay. All right, so then, I'm sorry. The gun range, I just wanted to talk a little bit about. My neighbor Bill Gillespie has a very good friend of his, he lives just down the street from me, and I know he gave, it was a sizable amount to the crime fund here. I think it was a six-figure number, I couldn't, I don't know exactly what it was. And I'm talking to Bill, I know he wanted that to go toward the gun range, and I look, I see now they're looking at doing that. I know when they allocated the space on the west side of the garage there, for the gun range, you know, it was done, and it was sold kind of to the public, although we didn't really get to vote on it, with the intent that the public would be able to use that gun range. And I just would like to make sure that that's the case, if we're gonna be allocating resources there. I'd be surprised if the Police Department would really wanna have residents in there, and other people that even aren't residents, in there with their guns, using the gun range. And is that really a benefit to the community or not? If it's not, we should go in with our eyes open and understand that that's not a benefit. I know my wife was an election judge, and in the police station, and there, they wouldn't even let them use the microwave in the lunchroom, because of issues of people being beyond the area that they didn't want the public. So I kind of have a big sneaking suspicion, this gun range would never be used by the public. And if that's the case, we should make people aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have, and a lot of your issues will be discussed at some point, but obviously not tonight. So Ms. Deborah Eric, again, please, for the record, state your name and address.
Debbie Eric, 730 Farm Hill Drive. My notes here are about problems encountered during the roadwork on Farm Hill in Holstead. When is Holstead Drive supposed to be done? The date on our letter says October 31st. It's not done, not even close. Is that this year or next year? I didn't have any idea, I got regular one year. I was told they were tarring three weeks ago. When I asked the construction supervisor last week, he said, "Well, the weather has gone too," and I can't say the word in front of you. "They weren't working during the evenings when it was light, or Saturdays during the summer when it was nice." Also, we were told it would start May 1st, they didn't start until after 4th of July. Why did they tear up Farm Hill Drive? We already had tar, and we were told that would be redone next year. They tore it up this year, and put new tar down. The focus should have been Holstead Drive, which by the way, only has about 10 feet of tar. The boat turnaround doesn't seem wide enough for large RVs or trucks. I've been told by my neighbor, he can't get through with his RV. You may wanna come out and measure that, the circle is too tight, and also, they wasted their time putting in cement, and then they tore the cement out, and now they put cement in again. So we don't know what's going on with that. During this construction, we've had following issues. Garbage trucks can't get down the road, that postal truck not be able to deliver to us a few days. Even my son had called one night and couldn't even get to us. I had to call the police, and instead of, there was a way into my house. It was good there wasn't an emergency, by the way, that night. There was also one week when we had so much mud, it was three feet deep, you could have never got through the shit, or whatever, or the drive. Every time we leave Farm Hill Drive, we don't know whether we go left or right. There's never signage telling us which way is closed, which way to go, and you end up driving all the way down, and finding that's closed, and you fall the way back. It'd be nice if they even just had an arrow, saying which way to go today, or tonight, or this afternoon. The ends of our driveways have been chopped out for new aprons. We put a little bit of gump gravel in the middle of the driveway area, so there's a big hump on each side. So my husband goes to clear snow off of that, and he has a blade, and you hit that with your blade.
Right.
One neighbor has a Bobcat, he was able to smooth this out, the other one's out there like me, shoveling dirt, kind of meant to try to fill it in better, so. It's been a money mess, and we've spent many dollars on car washes, and we don't have hoses to hose up our cars, because it's too late moment, and they're all put away for the winter. So, thank you for listening, and I appreciate it.
Yep. And we understand, the council spent significant amount of time in our work session discussing this, because just like you, and I know you're more frustrated than we are, but we too are very, very frustrated with the contractor that is out there. And we understand, and we discussed all of the issues, and right now, the contractor is telling us that if the weather holds out, they're gonna be paving Wednesday, Thursday of this week. So we'll see, that's what he's promised, and that's what we're holding him to again, barring unforeseen circumstances, weather-
Are they inclined for being later than they're supposed to be?
Well, there's, again, it's a whole nother issue. What I would highly recommend is that if you have some time, to come into City Hall and talk to staff, and they can give you a whole rundown, because it just would be too time-consuming tonight. But I can tell you that we are aware of the situation, and it should be remedied, and we are keeping, and our staff is keeping on top of it, and we've even talked with our attorney to see what our options might be if things don't happen the way they're supposed to. They do have until Thanksgiving, that's their drop-dead timeline, but we are being told that on Wednesday, they will be starting to pave. Once it's paved, it'll be a lot better, and there's some other things that will have to be done next year, so.
Are they gonna come out and fix our driveways? There should be some more gravel put on the driveway.
Yes, I believe-
Are they gonna put an apron in?
Real quick, Mr. Hornby, could you answer that?
We're trying to get the main line shaped up and finished, and then pave that, and they're supposed to follow up with the driveway work. So they're trying to get the pavement on the driveways as well this year.
Okay, so they'll come in and fill, and-
So if not, it'll be temporarily done with gravel.
Okay. We're hoping for the pavement, so, all right.
Do you leave both?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that concludes our Persons to be Heard, and so we're gonna move on to special presentations. We have the 2016 CAFRA Award again this year. Mr. Grimm?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilman, I guess I was gonna grab the plaque off the wall out there, but if anyone wants, they can look at it on their way out. But basically, we did apply for the annual award that we've been receiving since 2004 on our comprehensive annual financial report, and we did just get that, results that, here in October, that we did receive that again. So I guess I'd like to, before I go any further, express my thanks to Angie Bowle and Don Muchko, who are the Associate Accountant and Utility Billing Specialist in the Finance Department, for all their hard work throughout the 2016 audit and reporting process, and without their help, and others around the city, as well as the support of the council, the city would not be able to obtain this, you know, pretty prestigious award. I think there's, you know, 80 or so cities in the state that roughly go for it, and we're probably one of the smaller to mid-sized ones that get the award, so it, but it does, it definitely provides the benefit of, it has additional statistical tables, more information in the audit for basically bondholders, residents, anyone that wants to read more about city finances, and I don't know how many other besides myself, but I'm sure there's a few others out there, so.
I'm sure there are.
So yeah, just wanted to, I guess, let the city council know that we received that award again, and thank the finance staff, and basically, and we'll be applying for it again in 2017, as that financial report audit comes around, so.
Well, congratulations to you and the other individuals, as you mentioned, so, good job, and I think it really speaks volumes of your efforts and staff's efforts to make sure that we are being as responsible as possible, so, thank you. So next, we have our community-
I had a, excuse me, I'm sorry, I had a question about it.
Sure.
And first of all, I'd like to give Brian accolades to, because I think your work is what is responsible for this award. On page seven of the award, it says, there's a grading category, and grades on different aspects of the award, and it says that there's a detailed comments and suggestions on the different grading categories that weren't attached to the report. And I'm just wondering where those are.
Yeah, I definitely could send those out, so we basically get comments, you know, I think this year, we had, you know, I don't know, seven of them or so, you know, page and a half, or just things that the reviewers that go through, and go through their checklist, you know, when basically take a report and go through, they'll give, you know, some comments as far as where to improve in certain areas of the report, so. But yeah, I definitely could attach that for future years, and send that out here. I usually send a copy to our auditors, so that in conjunction between myself and the auditors, we can make sure that those comments are corrected, but it's usually just in formatting, that they wanna see something presented a little differently, or whatever, as far as per GFOA standards, so.
Yeah, but, well, the reason I ask is, there's a grading category on government-wide financial statements that says needs significant improvement, and I'm just curious what that is.
Yeah, and I did ask our auditors about that, because I was like, because we've always, usually, every other year, had everything proficient, and the one, they said they disagreed with the reviewer on, basically, they thought the reviewer had it wrong or misinterpreted, and on the other one, they said it was probably a pretty nitpicky comment that, you know, they do their own reviewing too, or they participate in the GFOA program, our auditors, and will review other cities, and they said that, you know, they wouldn't have brought it to the level of needing improvement, they would have called it, you know, proficient, and just made the comment in that case, or whatever, so. Yeah, I was, I asked about that also, because I was wondering, because the government-wide financials are the ones our auditors take our fund, financial statements, and then add, make government-wide statements for the government standards that are out there, so I did ask about that and stuff, and wanted clarification, and that was the response I got back from our auditors, so.
Yeah, well, I think it's important that the city council get the comments and feedback on those, on if that comes with this report.
Sure.
It'd be nice.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, otherwise, then we will move on to our community survey results, and we have Mr. Peter Leatherman with us this evening.
It's a pleasure to be here with you. I'm assuming I can control this from here? Perfect. Just to review what we undertook for the city. We conducted a telephone survey, 400 randomly selected residents across the community. The calls were completed between August 23rd and September 9th, so before Labor Day, and after Labor Day, when the kids came back from school, obviously, we took about four to five days off there. The average interview time was 24 minutes. We had 10% stay on the phone with us for over an hour. That's by their own choosing. Normally, the questionnaire wasn't as long, that it elicited that much, but we consider those folks the historians of the city, shall we say. They have a lot of additional detail to add. But, so an average of up to 24 minutes, the refusal rate was very low. Once we found them at home during this busy time, approximately 40% of the calls were completed setting up appointments with the person, so that it's convenient for them to take it at the time that we're calling, was 5%. Everybody asked about cellphones. Can we reverb on this?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Cellphones were 38% of the sample, cellphone-only households. 15% indicated that they only had landlines, and the remaining 47% had both cellphones and landlines in the mix. And just to keep in mind the statistical caveat as we're going through this, the results are projectable to within plus or minus 5% in 95 out of 100 cases. So that's the parameter as we're looking. With common questions from 2011, I put the history out there, you're gonna see some significant changes. The overall, probably the biggest change is a movement towards more excellent ratings, more satisfaction on a lot of things, a lot of change on the community. Minnesotans are traditionally difficult graders. Things are typically good, and good is oftentimes good enough. So it's when you get people moving into a category of excellent, or strongly agreeing, or strongly approving, that that's a significant change oftentimes. So upfront, that's one of the big changes we've seen over the six years. Six years is a long time, and you've had a lot of growth, so we don't know if that, if the line is a straight line between the two data points, or whether there were ebbs and flows within. One comment about earlier mention on internet surveys, and then also versus telephone surveys, and mail-in surveys. With an internet survey and a mail-in survey, they're not quantitative. There's no statistical projectability. As you see in the data, when we get to households with internet access, 10% of households don't have internet whatsoever. So they're not gonna be able to participate in a Survey Monkey, or another type of online method. In addition to a mail-in survey, you have the difficulty of the 18 to 34-year-olds not going to the mailbox. So there's an inherent bias in both methods and delivery, but then you also have, on the opposite side, a bias on self-selection. A person who feels good about something typically doesn't take the time to respond. And we've actually done a few case studies where we have a random sample in a community in comparison to a mail-in or an internet survey. Typically, what we see is 15 to 20% more negativity, because if a person has an issue to raise in a survey, and they can choose to opt in, instead of being randomly selected, they're gonna take that opportunity. So they really are apples and oranges, when you're looking at the two methodologies, one's quantitative, one's qualitative. I just want you to answer that question upfront. When we look at the demographics, the demographics we use for two purposes, I have a set of 300 pages behind me of prospectus, with my each question, looking at the demographics, because they're interesting to see the differences between groups. But also, you can use it to look at the census information, to make sure we have a representative of samples, one of the checks we have. And the census does updates from the 2010 census on a regular basis with American Community Survey, so there's expectations on households with seniors, households with children, and on all those key variables were within that plus or minus 5%. In fact, on the key, the seniors and children were within plus or minus 1%. So, in the community, the longevity in the community, the average resident here has been here about 15 years. It's actually gone down a little bit from 2011. Obviously, you've had growth in people moving in, and so that's reflected. So you have about 39% of the community that's been here for the last 10 years, but you still have a third that have been here over 20. So you do have that division in the community on longevity. Households containing seniors, this time around, 18% of households, and 39% indicated they had a child, somewhere between 0 and 18. And the age distribution, the sample is those over the age of 18, so children aren't included. Came in at about 47 years old is the average age. You can see the largest, almost the majority of the community is between 35 and 54 years old. How they would describe their property, this is self-described now. 3% farm, a hobby farm, at 19%, residential home with one acre lot, 62%, compound house duplex, condominium, condominium, and single digits. The financially stressed versus the financially comfortable, you are a financially comfortable community. This is all over the board, especially going back to the recession, it's almost reversed in many cases. The typical on that for financially comfortable is about 65%. So you have about 7, 8% more saying, "We feel financially comfortable." And then we had the males and females, 48% male, 52% female. So those are the overall demographics of the study. I think for the sake of the presentation as we're going through, since there are so many charts, if you have a question on a specific chart, just raise your hand.
Sure.
Because if we get to question chart 31, and something pops in, feel free to interrupt me. So the first question we ask is the overall quality of life rating. Is it excellent, good, only fair for? Now, most people don't live in a community that they think is only fair for. If they think it's only fair for, they're gonna be looking for a new city to live in quite rapidly. So you've always, in almost all communities, are in that 90, 92% range for the face of life. What differentiates communities is the excellent rating, the enthusiastic rating. And you can see in 2007, that was at 42%, in 2011, 44, and we have a statistically significant jump now to a majority, 53% rating of quality of life is excellent here. Places that the city within the top 10 that we have, very few cities go over the 50% threshold on the excellent rating. And in our database across the state of Minnesota over the past three years, the average in excellent rating is 21%. So not only do you compare very favorably to neighbors across the state, you also compare very favorably to your history of the past decade. What do folks like most about living in the city? The biggest change on this survey was the scatological nature of the responses this time around. If you go back to 2007, 2/3 said rural and open space. That was the key value, that's one of the highest ratings of any sort of value on what they like most. 2/3 of people on an open-ended question, coalescing around one response. It was still 46% in 2011. And now 2017, it still leads the list, but it's down to 18%. And people are picking a whole bunch of other things that they value about living in the community. They all do center, though, on what we would classify as small-town values, in a sense, whether it's the rural and open space, the small-town feel, the quiet, safe, close to family and friends, friendly people. You only have, you have very few people in the quintessential suburban response talking about what they value as location, or it's close to my job, it's convenient. Folks really do see themselves as a small town on the edge of the metro area, and that really is why they value the community, and they chose to live here. Now, what do they consider the most serious issue? You can see we also have quite a change at the top. Growth in development was almost a flat majority a decade ago, at 45%. It still leads the list, but now it's down to 14% as the top concern for the most serious issue. We consider anytime you have 25% or more of people coalescing around one response in an open-ended question, that signifies a great concern in the community. You only have two that actually hit double digits. The growth in development and the quality of roads is a concern, and that's grown a little bit over the decade from 7% to 12%. High taxes as a concern at the top of the mind has dropped by about half. Now, we're gonna go into in-depth on taxes and the perception of taxes. That doesn't mean that the property tax climate has changed in the city, because it hasn't, but what it does mean is the top-of-the-mind response is the most serious issue facing the community, it doesn't rise to the level it has in the past. And this is atypical for what we're seeing across the metro since the legislature, the legislative races last election, when there was a discussion on surplus, and about spending at the state level, and about property taxes. People's concern on property taxes grew. So the average since last summer on this question is the most serious issue, is about 20% across the metro. What else comes in? You can see folks are all over the place from this, going down to the single digits. I kind of left them in there, so you could see the different types of things they were focusing on. Traffic congestion, slow road construction, no diversity, no animal control. But let's go down to the third from the bottom, the nothings. Those folks are what we consider boosters. They're different than I'm sure. I'm sure it tells us, I'm sure there's something wrong, I just can't think of it right now. The nothings are folks that say there are no problems here, that this community is exactly what we want, and we are, basically, you're telling us you're boosters. And they're positive throughout. As they go through the survey, how they answer the quality of life, on communications, on government, they remain positive. That 19% is about twice as high as the norm across the metro right now, that's about 90%. That's about nine percent. And you can see also to the history of it, in two thousand seven, nobody said nothing. Everybody had an issue in two thousand seven. In two thousand eleven, it was seven percent. Now it's almost triple to nineteen percent in two thousand seventeen. The city service ratings, this is a very busy chart, so.
I have a question. So are we gonna get all these charts?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you. I guess we're not gonna remember all.
You can get three hundred pages of cross tabs. We'll take this chart as a whole, instead of going through service by service. What I've done is arrayed the positive ratings in the blue. The red is the negative, is the red. And I, but I did pull apart the excellent and the good in the blue. The light blue is the excellent rating this time around. The darker blue is the good rating. You've had improvement on almost every service, but you've had a lot more folks on almost every service saying it's excellent. So there's more intensity in favorable opinion across the board on city services. Now, a couple that I'll point out that in the red, the double-digit. If we go down the chart, stormwater runoff was a concern, was lower rated in two thousand eleven by fifteen percent. Still, it's at seventeen percent, not a statistically significant change. And if we continue down, city planning, about twenty percent have been concerned. If we go back into the survey, that tends to focus on people's concerns on growth and city planning. And then the street maintenance on paved and gravel, actually, a little bit of a dip in unfavorable ratings on both of them. But they still lead the list at twenty-nine and thirty-one percent unfavorable, compared to sixty, seventy-two percent favorable on paved and sixty-two percent favorable on gravel roads. Following up and asking folks to give us a hierarchy of importance of city services. And these don't add to a hundred, because I've only arrayed the first two points. Is the service absolutely essential, or is it very important? What's not up there is somewhat important or not to, not important at all. You can see there's a clear hierarchy here, with police protection and fire protection, both at ninety-one percent is absolutely essential. As we go down the list, snow plowing at seventy percent, absolutely essential. Sanitary sewer service, sixty percent, absolutely essential. And then street maintenance in both paved and gravel at about fifty-two and sixty-five percent. Everything else, while there's still importance, the way to look at this chart and how residents are prioritizing is based on an absolutely essential versus very important. But you can see as a whole, you have a flat majority across the board saying, these ser, all of these services are at least very important. That absolutely essential is the differentiator for folks. Now, we saw lower ratings, even though they were a little bit higher this time around, on street maintenance. And residents did place the essential category on street maintenance, a majority in both of those categories. So we followed up and asked folks, would you support a property tax increase for street maintenance if it was dedicated? Thirty-two percent said they would favor, sixty-four percent would oppose. This is about twice as high as it was, I believe, in two thousand eleven. But still, when it comes down to would they pay for it, residents aren't to that point yet. Now, those that said they would favor it were asked the following question to look at the tax tolerance. So the right hand, the favor, about seven dollars per month of the thirty-two percent that said that they would support.
I had a question about this question. It was question number thirty-one. And out of the people that said that they would favor, it says there was an N of a hundred and twenty-eight. But when you got down to thirty-two, the question thirty-two and asked how much you'd be willing to pay, six percent of them said nothing. So wouldn't that take them out of the N of a hundred and twenty-eight? Wouldn't that change the N to, because they said they wouldn't pay anything?
Right. It's what, when you actually ask them for a dollar amount, that will happen. It's kind of the Minnesotan nice aspect of it. Yeah, I'll favor, and then as we give them the scale, it would, the N would stay the same. The one twenty-eight is the, is the number that said they favored a property tax increase for street maintenance. But then when you ask them to give a number, residents, some residents will pull back on that.
Right. But so thirty-two percent don't really favor a tax increase. It'd be more like twenty-nine percent.
Roughly, yes. Overall, it would be six percent, thirty-two percent. Yeah, roughly twenty-nine percent, if you, if you pull out that six percent.
I would pull out the six percent.
But it's kind of, a kind of a, how do you say, an axiomer, because they're saying that it's essential, very essential, for road maintenance, both pavement and gravel. But then they're saying they don't want, they don't want their taxes increased to do that.
It's the difference between concept and reality. When we do surveys and work with clients, we'll work with a lot of school districts, oftentimes cities and park lots. It's very different to ask in concept, do you support or oppose, than to come in and say, how much would you support if that's the case? And I think what it's kind of telling you, you do have that tension. And so by saying it isn't absolutely essential, a majority on both of those saying it's absolutely essential, though it hasn't reached a critical threshold in order to say I would support a property tax increase. Because keep in mind, you still have, do have roughly two-thirds of people rating them favorably already. And comparatively, I mean, and this ebbs and flows from community to community. It ebbs and flows from the time of year. If this is done in March, sometimes we have forty, forty-five percent of people rating city roads unfavorably.
Oh, because of potholes and things like that, yeah.
Those sorts of things. It hasn't reached the critical mass. It kind of, they're saying if there's, if there needs to be reprioritizing, perhaps look at street maintenance, but we're not interested in paying more at this point in time. City drinking water. We asked folks first if they were connected to city water. So this is of the folks that said they were. And we asked the rating of city drinking water. Sixty-six percent indicated it was excellent or good. Thirty-four percent only fair or poor. This is all over the board, from community to community, depending on water treatment plants, which aquifer, the hardness, all of those sorts of things. But then following up, and we told them that you had two plans come online this year, and have they noticed an improvement? A majority, sixty percent, indicated that they had noticed an improvement over the course of this year. People's perception of property taxes to city government. We first asked what they thought the percentage of their property tax went to city government. And your folks know their information. It nets out that they estimated at about twenty-three percent going to the city government, after the fact, we told them it was actually twenty-four, twenty-five percent. So they were one of the most accurate representations of people's perception. I mean, oftentimes, people overestimate this quite a bit in a city. But your folks really are informed on the property taxes. What are their perception of property taxes? Now, we saw that drop earlier on the most serious issue. Does it carry over to what, when we ask them about their feelings on property taxes? Are they very high, somewhat high, above average, or somewhat low, or very low? You did have one percent say somewhat or very low. I have those three people's names and phone numbers. You still have sixty-three percent indicating they're high. It was sixty-two percent in two thousand eleven. So while it's a top-of-the-mind concern, it's abated. Their overall perception of taxes has still remained about the same, thirty-five percent above average. We would place the community as a hostile tax climate. Anytime that, the high and very, the very high and somewhat high go over fifty percent, we consider it a hostile tax climate. It's not nearly the highest. The highest we have this year is seventy-seven percent in the community saying their taxes are very high or somewhat high. That's extraordinary hostile task climate. This is a hostile task climate, so everything is met. And I think that goes back to the concern on street maintenance and repair at this point in time. Now, though, when you ask them to consider the city services they receive and the property taxes they pay, how would they rate the value? Last time, we had seventy-four percent rated favorably. This time, we have eighty-seven percent rating it favorably. Keeping in mind that the perception of property taxes has not changed. What has changed is the perception of city services being provided. So now the value is given, residents are given a more positive value. And I'll just flip back on this one. The other way. You have twenty-three percent saying they thought their property taxes were very high. You only have thirteen percent rating that value only fair or poor. So residents, while they do think their taxes might be high, they are seeing that there's a value being provided much more so than they have in the past. Now, we did tell them about the twenty-five percent portion going to city government and asked if they had changed their opinion about the value of city services. You really didn't, because your folks were right on estimating at twenty-three percent. But that piece of information made twenty percent rate the value at least somewhat better. Only six percent thought it was somewhat worse. They had underestimated their taxes. So you, the perception on taxes really at this point in time is based on reality. But that piece of information, when you put it in context for people, does have a net positive effect on the portion going to the city itself, not the school district or the county. Do residents feel safe? Absolutely. We can go through this chart quickly. Ninety-nine percent indicated they're either somewhat safe or very safe. Eighty-seven percent very safe. Not much improvements on that one. Traffic speeding. We asked this in two thousand eleven and two thousand seventeen, and it has not been an issue in either. And this actually is a growing issue across metro. We see this in some communities at the thirty-five, forty percent level. Now, so here, this time around, it's sixteen percent very serious or somewhat serious, and eighty-four percent saying that it's not too or not at all serious. Same thing with stop sign violations. It was eleven percent, this time it's thirteen percent. So both traffic speeding and stop sign violations do not seem to be a concern amongst residents at this point in time. The police department. Twenty-eight percent indicated that they had had contact during the past two years. And then we asked that twenty-eight percent, how would they rate the handling of that situation? Ninety-two percent indicated that they would rate it excellent or good. Seven percent only fair or poor. And many in that only fair or poor category talked about specific instances, perhaps unfairly ticketed for speeding, those sorts of instances. But on this one, when you're asking a person to rate the situation they're involved in, and sometimes it's not a positive situation, the norm on this is eighty percent favorable rating. This time, we have ninety-two percent. On the feeling of the response time, eighty-seven percent thought it was appropriate. That's also an outstanding rating.
We have an outstanding police department.
Public safety services. Fire department responds in a timely manner. We have a statistically significant drop, six points down, but they did say no. They said they didn't know. So while the same, you still have two percent saying, no, that's not the case. You did have more uncertainty on the question. But do they trust the public safety services being run in the city? Absolutely, ninety-seven to one. The city gun range. We gave them a paragraph description of the gun range, and asked would this, should the city finish the gun range? Sixty-nine percent indicated yes, they should. Twenty-six percent indicated no. If we look at intensity, and these sorts of policy questions, we always look at the strong yes versus the strong no. And you can see about two and a half to one in favor of the strong yes on this issue. Now, we did follow up with those that said that they supported it. Would they support property tax increase, user fees, some of their funding mechanism? Not property taxes. Sixty-two percent indicated that they would support finishing the gun range using user fees as the preferred method. Then going back to the whole sample, the likelihood of use, actually have a very high likelihood of use here. Fifty-six percent indicated they're at least somewhat likely. Now, you're not gonna have fifty-six percent of the community. What we typically tell a client when they're looking at likelihood or interest on this is to take half of the very likely to follow through on the behavior, and a quarter of the somewhat likely. So roughly twenty percent of the community might be interested in using the gun range at some point in time. Parking rent facilities evaluation. Very little change over the, over the time. They don't add, it doesn't add to a hundred, because you have people saying we don't use it. So this time around, if we look at trails, eighty-three percent indicated that they had used a trail. They are members of the household that use a trail. Seventy-nine percent rated favorably, four percent negatively. Neighborhood parks, seventy-three percent indicated they used seventy-three. Large regional parks, sixty-two percent indicated they used sixty-two. Extremely strong ratings on park facilities. Lyle Park, forty-four percent indicated that they were not familiar with Lyle Park. Of the fifty-six percent that said they were familiar, thirty-three percent indicated that they had used, they are members of the household that used it in the past. Twenty-two percent indicated they had not. Would they support the use of city funding for? Once again, we're gonna go back to concept versus there's no price tag on this or how it's funded.
Is this based on the previous slide, how many people know of Lyle Park? I mean, it's, okay.
This is the community as a whole.
As a whole, okay.
I can break that out for you, also, looking at Lyle Park specifically. And once again, in concept, people like everything. The demos and the details, obviously, on what, what is in context. But it does give you a sense of where priorities are in the minds of folks on this. Picket shelter leads the list. Then the warming house and ice rink, playground equipment, dog park, and splash pads. You have at least two-thirds support. So really, the, the next question is kind of more helpful, because we kind of force people into a position and ask, what is your top priority off that list? And then what is your second priority? And is there an option that you most oppose? Most opposed, we'll start with that. The dog park, twenty-four percent. That's not surprising, because it really is seen more as a specific niche in folks. So when we test dog parks, there tends to be more of that, either really supported, or it's the most opposed. But as we look at the priorities for folks, the warming house and ice rink, forty-eight percent of the community indicated it was at least a second priority, but a third said it was top priority, followed by the picnic shelter, followed by the playground. The dog park, forty-six percent said they'd be at least somewhat likely to use it. Once again, going to that half of the very likely and a quarter of the somewhat likely. Roughly fourteen or fifteen percent of the community would potentially use it. Now, it's gonna depend also on this location. Those that said they're likely, the forty-six percent were followed up and they were asked, would you still use it if you had to pay a fee? Fifty-two percent indicated yes, they would, forty-two percent no. So if a fee was involved, of the forty-six percent, fifty-two percent, roughly about twenty-eight to twenty-nine percent of the community would, would use the dog park in a situation if a fee was included. Community events. A little bit of a downtick on Trista Days. The participation did drop twelve percent from two thousand eleven to two thousand seventeen. This doesn't add to a hundred, because you have a certain number of people saying they weren't aware of the event whatsoever. So you had twenty percent that weren't aware of Trista Days. Forty-six percent indicated that participated, thirty-four percent not participated. National night out, lower awareness, but you have more people participating. We'll go from fifty-six to sixty-two percent. And the spring-fall cleanup, that has dropped from fifty-eight to thirty-seven in participation.
And the only thing I'll comment on is Tristide twenty seventeen was virtually washed out.
Yeah.
That's the most recent one. And then the spring-fall cleanup, since the two thousand and eleven survey, we used to have a cleanup date twice a year, we went to it once a year. I couldn't tell you the exact year, but I know it was after two thousand and eleven. So there could be, we were just doing it once instead of twice a year. So people could be less aware, because we only do it one time. That's the only thing I can think of.
Especially on Tristides, if it wasn't washed out, that's gonna impact people's most recent memory.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but we, I don't think we've ever shut that down early. We shut it down early this year, because it was.
It was horrible.
It was a torrential down.
It was windy and cold.
And our primary talent had to cancel.
Wonderful. Pig races. Kids can't run in the mud, I guess.
Organics collection. Boy, this is a popular topic right now across the metro area. And like we find across the metro area, folks really are not that interested in organics collection. Forty-three percent indicated they're at least somewhat likely. Once again, if we do the math, you have roughly fourteen, fifteen percent likely to participate in it. Now, of the forty-three percent that said they were likely, would they still do it if they had to pay a fee? Well, these folks are a little bit more committed than the dog park users were. But seventy-four percent indicated that they would, twenty-one percent no. So roughly above a third of folks would be interested in participating in it and paying the fee. This is, I have one community over the past twelve months that actually they came right in at fifty percent very likely and somewhat likely. It's more typical that folks are in the higher thirties to the lower forties in ratings on likelihood of use of organics collection.
Isn't there a big push statewide?
Yes.
Okay, so are you reporting this information to the state so they know this? Because we get the pressure from the state.
From the county, yeah.
I'm assuming the cities that we do the survey for is showing it. And really what it comes down to, because sometimes a few communities who've gone really in depth kind of understand the reasons why they don't want to do it. And it really is a logistical thing that folks are trying to figure out. Where does the extra container go? Does it go inside? If it goes inside, they're worried about odor and those sorts of things. It's really impacting people's perceived need for this service.
Do you, do you think that that number could possibly be inflated because people see recycling as a good thing and telling the surveyor that they're?
Interesting, no, it's an interesting question. Recycling is a halo question. It's like voting.
Do you vote? Yes, of course.
Yeah. If we polled on Wednesday and all the districts were working it, ninety-five percent of people will vote wait, wait, not yet. And recycling is a thing. People are willing to save on this one though. We really don't know in following because there hasn't been the case study to come in and say, okay, this is all in place. We're all in. Now, what's the behavior of folks after the fact? But when you have, you know, a lot of communities go in depth on recycling. You have eighty percent of people saying they recycle, okay? Ten percent, no. You're still going to have fifty, sixty, sixty-five percent of people saying, no, I'm not going to recycle this. So we don't know for sure, but people are willing on this one. And a lot of it really is that logistical. There's a lot of concern about odor and about if I have to keep it inside. If I can keep it outside, then I'm worried that the animals coming here.
Right.
And all of those sorts of things.
Yeah.
Do you feel, folks feel they can have a say about the way the city runs things? This is pretty typical for what we see. The, the norm on this is about sixty percent yes, thirty percent no, and nine percent, about ten percent unsure. So you're right in about that norm. And following through on the no category, those folks in, who do any answer tree through S P S S, and they typically are most concerned about property taxes. That, that, they view their property taxes are high, so that's their primary concern on having a say. Now, when we ask about the mayor and city council, we didn't ask about the mayor and city council in two thousand eleven. So I don't have comparatives for what it was, but this time around, you have forty-four percent indicating they at least have a fair amount of knowledge. Only three percent said they have a great deal of knowledge. It's about the norm. Norm on this is between forty and forty-five percent of folks that really are paying attention enough that they, they say that they have a fair amount of knowledge. You do have eighty percent that are approving of the job of the working mayor and city council. Only eight percent disapprove. We always look at a ratio on this because this varies so much. Some communities, you'll have fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent unsure. The ten to one place is within the top quartile. Very strong rating for a ratio of that eighty to eight. City staff. Thirty, thirty-seven percent indicated that they had at least some contact with city staff. That's about the norm, about thirty-five, forty percent indicating that. And following up on job performance rating, eighty-seven to ten. Even stronger than the council, about nine to one. An outstanding rating. Once again, that places, that'll place the, the city staff in comparison in the top ten percent. Just a great rating. And then following up with a little more detail. Have they visited or contacted city hall in person or on the telephone? Forty-two percent indicated they had. And if they had, we went through a series, the four questions on the right-hand side of the chart and asked them to rate the waiting time, the ability to reach somebody to help, courtesy and efficiency. Threshold we always use on, for this is eighty percent. And you can see this, the staff easily clears the eighty percent threshold. But one that's most impressive is the efficiency. In this time of wanting things done quickly, a lot of cities, it's the most difficult standard to meet. And the norm on that is about eighty-one percent favorable. Ninety-one percent is very strong on the efficiency itself. And then finally, we looked at communications. Where are folks getting their information? There have been some changes over six years. Not, not real significant ones, kind of on the edges. The city newsletter is down seven points. The Milton newspaper is down six points. Little bit less emphasis on print, not surprising to what's happened over six years. An uptick on the city's website. Social media has appeared. Facebook really existed in two thousand eleven.
Not in our city. Not here.
But you really still have, while the print is the dominant source of information, there's a growing reliance on electronic. How do folks prefer to receive their information? Here's where electronic comes in even a little bit higher, even more of an appetite. The city newsletter still leads the list, but now the city website is in second place. Email pops up. One in eight folks would like to get an email. Now, a lot of cities get this results, a lot of organizations have been worked with. Whether email is actually the most effective way to communicate, people always say, send me an email. The likelihood of clicking through and actually opening it and using it to gather information sometimes is difficult because with a, if an organization will follow up, the lack of knowledge sometimes is not as high as those that are receiving in print as a preference. But then going down the list, social media is at eight percent. So you really, you have about forty percent, forty-two percent of the community saying I would prefer more electronic communication. On regular newspaper readership, not surprisingly, over six years, there's been declines. I guess on two of the four, surprisingly, the Lakeshore Weekly, you had fifty-five percent on two per points indicating that they regularly read that newspaper. But the Star Tribune has dropped twenty-six percent. The Laker has dropped fifteen percent. And the Waconia Patriot was due to the survey. We included that at this point in time.
So just to clarify on that previous screen, the Waconia Laker, twenty-two percent of the people surveyed were reading it?
Yep.
Okay, well, that's good news.
They have.
We added that.
The Messenger, eighty-one percent indicate that they had read, received and read the newsletter. For the rating of content and format, ninety percent favorable, only ten percent only fair, only fair or poor. Very strong reader, readership. Not only receipt but readership, but a strong evaluation of the content and format. Internet access. Ninety percent of folks said they had internet at home. Ten percent did not have internet access. Of that ninety percent, a very high seventy-three percent indicated that they had accessed the city's website. So about two-thirds of the community has visited your website. Very high. Now, would residents think of the website once they get there? Eighty-nine percent rate the content positively. Eighty-six percent rate the use of navigation favorably. Very strong ratings on this source of information that's being, being used by a lot of people.
That's good to know. That's excellent.
Utility billing, forty-two percent indicated, and this is website visitors only. Forty-two percent had used the website to pay. We have one percent that said, no, they weren't satisfied with the process. Obviously, almost unanimity in folks saying that it's, they're very satisfied with the process. City council meetings on YouTube. Sixty-six percent indicated, no, they had not watched. Two percent watch frequently. Sometimes that's at zero when they have to tell councils their spouses to watch them. You have eighteen percent.
That's probably true though.
Especially Monday night football. Eighteen percent are at least watching occasionally on YouTube, sixteen percent more infrequently.
That would be interesting if after this survey, more people will watch because I go, oh, maybe I should watch that once in a while.
And then finally, social media. We saw it pop up in the primary source of information. More folks were saying that they were interested in receiving information that way. And interestingly, you have forty-seven percent that indicated that they at one point in time had used city social media. Very high. And how would they rate the social media presence? Ninety-two to eight. Very strong. Now, we have seen in numerous cities that you just have Facebook.
We have Twitter as well.
You do, you do have Twitter. A growing reliance is, is folks, as you break it out, more people, if you ask Facebook versus Twitter over the past year, people are tending to say more on Facebook. Not only does it allow more information to be communicated, but at a national level, the use of Twitter has kind of alienated some folks on social media platforms. But still, when you have half of your folks that have internet access using it, you're doing something right. And also following them in the ratings at ninety-two percent. So that's all my charge on that behalf of the city.
That's a lot, yeah. Thank you very much. Comments, questions, lots and lots of information. I know we'll be using this ongoing. And good, I mean, the results are good. I think this is really, really helpful information. So, any other comments?
I had a question on page twenty-five of our packet. Where, where you have favorable ratings and essential ratings, where you, you have those ratings. And in some cases, fa, a favorable rating on street maintenance on page twenty-five is seventy-one percent. And that's, that favorable rating is classified as low. But on the page before that, you have an essential rating of seventy percent that's classified as high. And I'm just having a hard time understanding how those.
You're not the only one.
It's, it's the chart, it's the two columns. So the favorable.
David, will you call up that Excel spreadsheet?
Oh, do you have that?
Yeah, so I sent this to Peter because I was struggling with that as well. And what I've tried to do is, I needed to put my head around this. What does this mean? So Peter's scales, their company's scales. The favorability is in green across the top, so the high is ninety. And above, moderate is eighty, if I can read it, eighty to eighty-nine. And low is seventy-nine below.
So the scales different?
Correct.
They're two scales.
They're two scales. Okay, I was assuming they were the same.
Up across the top is the excellent and good, and the only fair and poor. So how are they rating services currently? The green coming down to the yellow is the absolutely essential, very important, somewhat important, not too important. So then it creates the, the nine quadrants.
Twelve. There's, there's three you can't see.
Okay, so there's four versus three, and that accounts for it.
Yeah, so there's twelve. Six, we don't show up at all. But highly favorable, even if you scroll down, if you go down below, utility billing is still rated very highly, just people just don't see the incentive needed. But most people, you know, they pay their bill, what, takes them ten minutes, four times a year?
Yeah.
You know, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so that's what I did to try to figure out, okay, what does this mean? Because the scales are different because of the.
It's meant to give you just a sense of priority of folks are. And if, if you scroll, I mean, the high favorable and essential rating, you, you want to maintain those services or improve those services at their current level. That's what they're, you're doing it well, and this is essential. And so just to give you a sense of priority, you know, oftentimes a community will look and say, okay, if you have something that's highly, that's low favorable, but then essential in that the upper right-hand quadrant was filled above the paved roads and maintenance, that would be an urgent issue in the community that the city services is not meeting the priority needs of clients and residents.
And I think as Peter pointed out, if the, the ones just below it, the pave and gravel, if those would get kicked up a box, that's when you might have a lot of people saying, why aren't you guys fixing our roads?
Right.
But we haven't quite got there yet. It's still important to people, but not as important to some other things. That's the way I'm looking at it. It's still a high essential rating, but.
That's a great visual to the, to the mayor's question earlier on about why it doesn't land. Mike's absolutely correct. If that, if paved, the road maintenance was in that one step up, you would have more folks supporting the property tax increase for road maintenance.
Right now, it's, I've been in, been at Trista since two thousand nine, so my friends here on the council have been here longer than that. And they'll tell you, it's always been a fiscally conservative community regardless of what year it is, what the economy is. That's just our lot here. That's just the way things work here. And so we, and, and so my interpretation of that rating on paved and gravel is we have to make sure that when we go and do an expensive project that you five and the rest of us feel it's worth it. Otherwise, I don't think we should do it. And that doesn't mean, I was talking with Mr. Malinger a little earlier today, it doesn't mean we can't stop. Because if you, because his example to me on the phone was, you could have a road that right now is a mill and overlay, and if you do nothing, now you got a total reconstruct. Then you are going to have people in here saying, well, why didn't you maintain it? Because now it's costing us a fortune.
And we have had people say that. Why didn't you maintain it? And now I have to pay to have it.
And that's always the tough dilemma for elected officials and us when we look at those two topics. Because there'll be people that'll tell you that gravel roads, even though they may still say they need some work, but we've had marked improvement in our gravel roads over the last five years because we're doing the dust abatement. Whereas before, we're charging residents to do it once a year. Starting next year, we'll be doing it as often as we can. If we have to grade, they'll go back and redo it. So we've made some strides on things, but it's always going to be a tough nut to crack here.
Could we get a copy of that also?
Sure. Yeah, I put that, they feel like I said, I needed to figure this out. These things go, I, I. This is not making much sense to me. I gotta categorize it. I can certainly get that to you. But that's what, those, this is what Peter has in his.
Visually rated, yeah.
Yeah, I'm a more visual guy, so.
All right. Any other questions?
I would just like to comment, comment on the social media ratings. And with the high percentage of residents using that and the percentage of those using it rating it high, to me, that indicates that that is a communication tool that our residents want. And back when the position of director of administration was changed, we, the council at the time, decided to move forward with a human, human resources, marketing and communications position, which was a change, but we did it intentionally and strategically because we wanted, one of the primary things that we wanted to accomplish was improving our communication to our residents. And so when the personnel committee was reviewing the resumes of the individual applicants at the time, that was a skill set that was very important to us and especially to the mayor in her wisdom. We were fortunate enough to have Cassandra Tabor apply for that position. And since she has been with us, she has been championing that effort for us to improve our website and to have a Facebook presence. And so I would think, like to thank her for efforts on that. And also just reiterate that by the rating that our residents who were polled in this survey, what it says to me is that they, they do value that communication tool.
Yeah, thank you. Like I said, I'm sure we will be using this information going. Like I said, I'm sure we will be using this information going forward in many different instances, but, good point, yeah. So, thank you very much. And with that, I know it was lengthy presentation, normally we'd like to keep them to about twenty minutes. Very, very good information, good stuff. And so, with that, thank you, Mr. Leatherman, and be sure and get those charts to us, we really appreciate that. With that, now we will, I know some of you have been waiting for the consent agenda items, and we'll move on to that. So, we have consent agenda items. A is approve our work session meeting minutes from October sixteenth. Approve our regular meeting minutes from October sixteenth. And a resolution to approve claims. D is a resolution to approve our final payment for the two thousand and seventeen seal coat and crack fill. And E is approve our final payment for Wells three and five rehabilitation. And F is approve our city campus HVAC maintenance agreement. And G is approve our probation completion for Chad Bartley, building inspector. And H is approve our consent, is approve consent and subordination for easement over Outlet B in Waterset Development.
I'd like to remove item A.
Work session meeting minutes, okay. Are there any others you wish to remove? Hearing none, then approving B, C, D, E, F, G, and H as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Bruce made the motion, and Mr. Malator seconded that. Further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So, number A is approve our work session meeting minutes?
Yes, I'd like to have added to the notes on the pavement management plan that I had requested that we receive the exhibit noting the roads' conditions in Excel format that we could use. So, I'd like to have that added.
Okay. Did you get that?
I'm sorry, it was too.
There was, there was a, to receive, the council would like, I made the request that we receive the exhibit within the pavement management plan, listing all the roads and their conditions in an Excel format.
Do you want to bring it back to the next meeting, or do you want to just approve it with, with that?
We can approve with that.
Okay, okay, all right, all right. Anything else? Otherwise, then, is there a motion to approve the work session meeting minutes from October sixteenth as amended, as Mr. Malator amended?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Thole and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So, you are good to go. Thank you. All right. Next, we have our business items. And our first item is ordinance four fifty-one amending the city fire code. And then also, we will then approve our ordinance number four fifty-one by title and summary. Building code, fire code, who wants to take that?
Well, Andrew wrote it. But I am going to discuss a couple of things, and I'll let him chime in in just a second, just to explain his work on redoing the fire code. So, we're at the request of the Mount Fire, who serves half our city. We were requested to amend our code to the two thousand and fifteen version of the state fire code, which we did, and which is before, it's quite a bit of cleanup that they did on this particular fire code. Although, there's a couple of things that we need to be aware of. I did have a question from one of our council members today about, trying to find the right section, I think it's. So, permit required. Yeah, so it's on page eighty-eight, I believe. So, permit required, there was, there's a couple of items, and although the council member asked about one, it kind of refers to both, so. Items number three, spray booths or spray areas involving spraying or dipping operations, that's the key word there. Utilizing flammable or combustible liquids, blah, 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 the rest of it. Number four, refi- refinishing and resurfacing operations, again, utilizing flammable and combustible liquids. Did have a chance to contact Fire Chief and Mount Greg Peterson, and he said those are for commercial operations. What they're trying to get at is when somebody is going to be a contractor for somebody, and they come to the city to do this, they're going to have to pull a permit. This is not intended to prevent you.
A homeowner.
Trying to homeowner, trying to resurf- redo your kitchen table. That's, that's still obviously something you can do. So, the key words that he told me were operations, because it said businesses, but it says operations. And that's what they're trying to get across there.
They probably used operations because if it's a temporary thing.
Could be.
Maybe something like that. But it, it does refer to like if you're a commercial or business enterprise.
Yes, that's the intention of that. And then, the last item is under the last couple pages. So, fire service charge. At one point in time, did have a fire service charge, so if you did have a structured fire, we were able to charge residents for that particular happening. And then, January of two thousand and sixteen, Chris, I believe, that was what the.
Yeah.
Yeah, January two thousand and sixteen, we changed that. Now, what we need to do is to strike that. So, the fire service charge, as you see on page ten of the section, page ninety-two overall in your packet, that moves on to page eleven, just before all the signatures, we'll need to remove that.
It would be subsection two definition, subsection three parties affected, subsection five billing and collections. And then, subsection six, application of collections of budget. All of that is stricken then.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, we eliminated that.
So, we eliminated that, and I think the Fire Chief was still under the impression, and I think Andrew was as well, that, that we still had that fee, and we did, we did take it out, you know, a year and a half ago, two years ago almost. So, that needs to be, so with that change, which we can obviously do, I'll turn it over to Andrew if he wants to make any comments about the overall change or the ordinance.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, as Mike pointed out, this, a lot of this was cleaned up. When the Fire Chief approached the city, we looked at this and ultimately determined that some of the things that were in the city's code previously were sort of remnants from, from past fire codes, both two thousand and seven and I think the two thousand and one. So, we worked with the Fire Department to try to clean some of this stuff up. And a few of the things, permits specifically, are not, the fire code by its own definition is applicable statewide. One of the benefits to including some of these provisions in your city code is to make things easier for residents to find. They know to look to the city code to determine if they need a permit, or what the burning restrictions might be. And so, when I was talking to the Fire Chief, you know, we decided that it was better to include some of that stuff here, as opposed to pointing people towards the fire code, which is an incredibly complex document. So, this, a lot of this sort of recites things that are already in state rules or in the fire code, but it's, it's intended to make it a little bit easier for people. So, there's, there's nothing that should really be new here, and like I said, the Fire, Fire Department's taken a number of looks at this and is comfortable with everything, so.
So, in other words, if, if we don't adopt this, then if we don't, basically, we're adopting the same regulations or whatever, the state codes. And if we don't adopt it, then basically, we have no authority to enforce it, they come in and they enforce it.
Yeah, the, one of the big benefits to adopting it is that it clarifies that the city's taken on disenforcement role. It gives the, the Fire Department sort of the legitimacy to go in and do some of these things. There are a few things in here regarding acting as a board of appeals or, of sorts, that the city has traditionally, traditionally accepted or chosen to. And so, we left all of those things in, because, you know, just based on history. So, what this represents is sort of the broadest authority that the city has under the fire code to not only reaffirm what the state's already imposed, but also sort of clarify some of those additional responsibilities for the Fire Department of the city.
Okay.
I have a question about recreational fires and leaf burning and things like that, because in the rural parts of Minnetrista, people do that a lot. Is, is that new as far as this part of the code goes, or has that always been there? And it just hasn't been enforced? And are we, we're not planning to change what we're doing because of that?
As far as I can remember, it's always been there. And you're correct, we don't typically go out and enforce it.
Unless there's a complaint.
If there's a complaint, they'll go out and they might warn somebody, and then, or tell them to put it out.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Bruce, that's correct, and my conversation's just with the Fire Chief. This isn't a new, new subject. You will see there was one provision added to the recreational fires, dealing with having to put them out if there is a complaint from the smoke. And the rationale behind that is there were instances in the past, I guess, where the Fire Department would get a complaint that smoke was blowing into a bedroom window or something, they would go to the, to the fire and say, you need to put this out, and people would say, oh, we're not going to do that. And so, the Fire Chief thought it would be useful to have some more clear language in the code.
And that's new.
That part is new, but the rest of the recreational fire regulations are not new, and it's my understanding that there's no. Yeah, there's no need to change any of that stuff.
I do know one of the reasons is because now, now we have a lot of smaller lots. And there are a lot of people in Hunter's Crest, Turtle Creek, you know, Sal Saunders, you know, in our developments, that actually have recreational fires. And then, it, the smoke issue becomes more of an issue in those circumstances.
I was going to say that, I think you're starting to see items like this in more densely populated suburbs.
It's not in.
Out here is not as big an issue, but as the mayor said, I think it's trending that direction potentially, so.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, motion to approve the ordinance four fifty-one amendment to section eleven oh three of the Minnetrista City Code, adopting the two thousand and fifteen Minnesota State Fire Code is in order. So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Just to clarify, Madam Mayor, that's with the, the stricken language that we discussed.
I'm sorry, yes, you're correct. So, we're taking out the fires definition, all of the ones that I listed previously. So, are we all in agreement?
So moved.
Okay.
I second.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Ms. Thole made the motion, and Ms. Mortensen seconded that. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. And then, we need a motion to approve the ordinance to be, by, by title and summary, to have it published by title and summary.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Bruce made the motion, and Mr. Malator seconded that to. Publish, thank you. Publish ordinance four fifty-one by title and summary. Further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So, next, we're moving on to our final business item of the evening, and that is approve our final, final plat for Woodland Cove third edition. Mr. Abel.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. The final plat has been submitted for the Woodland Cove third edition. This is actually the fifth phase within Woodland Cove. Technically, it's the, the third phase for, for Maddy, who are, who's made the application for you this evening. So, the, kind of the best overall diagram I have on the screen there showing the third phase, which is all, all on the east side of Kings Point Road. But this shows you kind of a blow up of the area of conceptually, what also will go on the west side in terms of commercial retail space, as there are two outlots of this third phase that do have commercial space incorporated in as part of that. So, just wanted to put this overall picture on the screen for you, for context. This plat does include a hundred and fifty-seven residential lots. There is one private park that will be maintained by the Master Homeowners Association. You can see those, that park being down on the south side of the, the, this phase along Highway seven. The homes in this phase will be constructed, this is a little bit different, this, these will be constructed by M&amp;I Homes. I think we, you all have been informed of that information, that Maddy is no longer building homes. Maddy will be constructing and developing the site improvements to the site. They'll be putting in utilities, streets, and doing the, the grading to the site. But M&amp;I Homes will be the one doing the actual building within this phase. We do have representatives from Maddy and M&amp;I Homes in the audience this evening for some questions and a small presentation about their product. There are eighty-nine single-family lots in this phase, as well as eighty-eight multifamily units, the townhomes that are on the south side of the, the property. Staff has found that the submitted plans do respect and conform to the core values of the master development agreement. The final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat, both have a hundred and fifty-seven units. You can see from the narrative, and I, I took a snapshot of, of the picture of, in the narrative. This is an overlay showing the preliminary and the final plat, the differences. You can see minor tweaks, as we've seen throughout each phase of, of these various developments. And again, this is, a hundred and fifty-seven units was proposed in the preliminary, and we're at a hundred and fifty-seven units now with the final. So, even more consistent than some of the other phases, where we've had minor tweaks to the number of, of units that is going in as part of that. As the council may recall, the, you did approve a preliminary grading agreement that allowed them to start grading on the site a few months ago. You also approved an amendment to that agreement, which allowed the applicants to install a sewer line from the east side of this phase towards the Lotus Drive section of, of the property. It's a crucial sewer line that needs to, to make that jaunt in order for this phase to, to occur. So, with that, like I said, M&amp;I Homes is, is here, and some of their product was demonstrated for you in your packet. Can certainly answer any questions, or allow for M&amp;I to get up and, and give their, their presentation. There is a second part of this, of course, a subdivision agreement that would probably be best just to, to separate out, if, if we could, and act on them separately.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Any questions, or would you like to hear from the applicant?
At what point is the subdivision in our packet, that you said the second part?
Yeah, so I mean, the, the first, the first step would be approving the final plat. And just as we do with, with any final plat, we'll enter into a subdivision agreement. We always act on those separately. Typically, I'll talk about both at the same time. As, as you can understand, there's, there's a little more complexity to this subdivision agreement, given the whole Lotus Drive element of it. So, I guess my, my suggestion was maybe, I mean, we can talk about both now, but I mean, the plat really has not much to do with, with the subdivision agreement. Plat, plat on its own can be acted on if you so choose. And then, we can dive into the subdivision agreement later.
Okay. So, I spoke with Mr. Abel earlier today, and I have a couple of questions, maybe concerns. I think some of them have been answered, but just kind of for the record. So, my concern, what we had in our packet, it showed the fire station, and now I understand that that's not, that's not correct. It's going to be across the street, it's going to be on the western side.
Correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
You can see this, this is the listed fire station there. As part of the narrative, one of the concepts that was listed there was an older concept that did show the fire station actually up, up in this area, and that has been moved.
Okay, and then, can you also show me access into these retail areas? Because I was concerned about coming off of Kings Point Road and then immediately turning into these retail areas, which could cause some traffic issues and, and safety issues. So, could you show us where, where you would access these commercial areas?
Yes, so Madam Mayor and Council, one of the, a lot of back and forth that occurred. So, the, the commercial area really has not much to do with M&amp;I Homes and Maddy. That is Carlson's essentially area of expertise and who plans on developing in the future. There was a lot of correspondence and back and forth, given, given this access point right here. And as you can see, one of the main concerns that city staff had was the proximity of these access points to this intersection, getting, getting the stacking effect and, and having some, some traffic concerns there. So, what, what this plan does not show is that, what we asked them to do was to move this intersection point back as far as they possibly could, which now, where these. Uh, which now where these commercial places will access in the future is going to be basically in this, this vicinity. There'll be a road that separates the townhomes from the commercial and this will be their access point, giving you as, as much room as possible to allow for that stacking i- in that area. So, and once again, they're not, you know, at this time, they're not developing the commercial areas. Those are simply outlots. You know, there, there is no plan. These, this is just a general layout of what could go in there. Um, but th- those were, that was a comment that, uh, we, we made sure we incorporated into the engineering comments and part of the review of this as this plat moved forward, because these commercial outlots are technically a part of this plat.
Right.
They're just not developing them at this time.
Okay. And then my other concern was, and we've had this um situation where there's been homes in front of a park and there's no um public street fronting the park. And so my question was, how do you get, so let's say the eighty-nine homes, single-family homes are over there and they wanna go to the, these parks. How do they get to these, to this park?
Sure, um, Madam Mayor and council, there's, there's, um, one of the major things, there's gonna be this, this eventually a, a north-south uh regional trail corridor that runs all the way through the site. This, this will be one access point. A trail that comes down and would, would it connect you, get you to the parks. The, the other thing in, in talking with the, the developer today, um, there, there will be um sidewalks all throughout these, these townhomes. So yes, these single-family uh residents would have to cross the street. But um there, there will be sidewalks throughout the townhomes that would allow for residents to, to get down to use, use the parks down on the south side of the property.
Okay.
How does the sidewalk actually tie to the park? Cause I, I don't see, I would, can you explain that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let the applicant speak more, more to the detail of that if we could.
So for ea- for, uh, council, Madam Mayor, um, for each of these townhomes, there is a, on the park side of all those townhomes, there will be a sidewalk that runs in front of them. So between the townhomes and the park, there'll be the sidewalk and then all those little green spaces between the townhomes on the, on that park side have a, they have a sidewalk that runs to that sidewalk. And I can, if you want to look, I have the, I brought the plans just to show you.
Yeah, if you can just, because it's really hard to see on there.
Yeah, it, it is.
It is.
So, yeah, so there'll be, I mean, there's gonna be quite, quite a bit of sidewalk that runs along the whole front of that park. Um, so there is access and even with those parking spots, I even see there'll be, there'll be sidewalks that run from there.
Okay. Okay, so there's access in between.
Yeah.
Okay. You wanna show them? So there's access in between each um block of homes.
Oh, okay. Okay. And Highway seven right there.
Yeah. Plus between each block of
Of town.
Of townhomes, okay. You wanna show them? Okay. Okay, and then you can stay here if you want. I just have a question. So on your townhomes, they're all look to be the same. Do you not offer like different colors or something? It just, it's just looks like a sea of blue and white and it's, you know, I know that that was one of the issues that we, we you know, this was back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, whenever we were talking about this. We said, we'd really like to see some kind of variance. It, so what, what is your plan? Uh, in the packet, it just showed blue and white.
I'll, I'll let John speak.
Okay.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. John Rask with uh, uh, M and I Homes. And just a quick commercial on who we are. About two years ago, M and I Homes purchased Han Takean Homes. So if you're out in our neighborhood and you see the Han Takean name, we're one of the same. It's not uh two separate builders. Uh, to answer your question, we'll have four different color uh palettes uh that, for the townhome buildings. Um, we will use different uh stone uh siding colors. Uh, so there will be a variation. I can provide those to you. We're giving you a, a sample. We try not to contrast them too much. I mean, I think it's good to have, uh, you know, give it some, a, a different look without, you know, trying to go too far apart, because I, I think they have some consistency in the colors important. But uh, there are some fairly significant changes in that.
It's just if you give somebody directions, you say, well, we live in the blue quadrant and then everything is blue.
Yeah, yeah, no, there, and we will, um, we can certainly provide that to staff and show the, the variation. But there will be forced uh distinct color package, a little difference still uh on the front as well as trim and siding colors.
But I, I believe, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're working with the, the master uh homeowners association. So they, they have, um, not as big of, in, in this situation, given this development, seeing the architectural guidelines, I mean, the books this thick, that the Master Homeowners Association um is a part of and, and enforces when it comes to architectural guidelines. And I think, I know that when, when you guys came in, you were gonna work on modifying some of those and making sure the product would fit and yet um, they're, they're keeping an eye on it too as well, Madam Mayor, to ensure that um, it is also the Master Homeowners Association concern as well, if they, you know, they all don't look the same. There's a variety. Um, you know, it, it doesn't look like one big block and I know they're, they're working through that. So, um, as I said, it's, it's very detailed uh architectural guidelines that, that go into this and, and, um, and we actually, per every permit um that has come in, we make sure that the Master Homeowners Association group has okayed it before we let the permit out the door. So we have a couple of different checks and balances to make sure that there's that variety and they're meeting the, the guidelines of the architectural guidelines that were set forth.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? Concerns? Otherwise, um, if you're ready, then uh I need a motion to approve the final plat for Woodland Cove third edition with the conditions, with staff's conditions.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So next we, um, so, Mr. Malater, now we're on the subdivision agreement.
Thank you.
So, um, staff, do you wanna make comments first?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just give you a brief overview, Madam Mayor. I mean, this is pretty standard. I, as I said, we do do this. We've done this with every phase of Woodland Cove and any other development with a final plat. Quickly, just what, you know, we know the subdivision agreement obligates the developer to construct the road and utilities and other improvements within the development. We ask for the developer to give us a standard letter of credit that ensures that they're gonna do those i- improvements. The, the one little uh detail uh with, with this subdivision agreement goes back all the way to, to twenty twelve with the master development agreement, which called for the improvement of Lotus Drive in conjunction with the first phase of the development that abuts Lotus Drive. That requirement was technically triggered at the time of Woodland Cove uh second edition, um, which is kind of hard to see, but I think we all are familiar with the second edition is up here. And technically, a portion of Lotus Drive did get reconstructed during the second edition. But at the time, all the parties involved uh agreed uh to delay the, the rest of Lotus Drive uh reconstruction. Um, this mainly was due to the Metropolitan Council's interceptor, uh, which is labeled L thirty-eight project from Saint Bonnie. If you recall, the Met Council has a plan and put in place to put new interceptor lines in from the Highland Road lift station uh on the edge of Saint Bonnie, all the way along Highway seven through the Woodland Cove development. And then it will eventually connect into Lotus Drive. The current interceptor line is under Lotus Drive and there needs to be new interceptor lines put in uh under Lotus Drive. Um, so they went through the process of putting plans and specs together. All parties involved agreed to delay the Lotus Drive improvement until the third phase was to come in. At the time, I think everyone involved assumed that the Met Council project would likely occur before the third phase came in. And so it was ultimately gonna be the Met Council who ended up reconstructing Lotus Drive. And um what ended up happening was the County Road forty-four interceptor project got moved uh ahead. It got uh moved up on the priority list, so that delayed the L thirty-eight project along Highway seven. Um, so that's why the County Road forty-four project is moving forward next year. Uh, and we, they've now delayed, the Met Council has delayed the L thirty-eight project. Where they have it right now is at uh twenty twenty-one constructing, construction would start on the L thirty-eight project. So that essentially puts us right back in, in exactly where we were when the second phase came in. About, uh, do we construct load, reconstruct Lotus Drive now? Do we wait for the Met Council? Um, and all of those different various questions are coming up. Maddy and Woodland Cove both want to see Lotus Drive constructed next year. It, it's, uh, there's contractual agreements that Maddy is required to satisfy in order to get Lotus Drive. They either need to pay their share of Lotus Drive or reconstruct Lotus Drive. Um, Wood- Woodland Cove LLC, which is essentially Carlson, um, wants to see Lotus Drive reconstructed next, next year. So what does this mean as part of this, this subdivision agreement? And as you can see in there, we have a couple of different options listed out. This has been actually months of, of, of back and forth and talks with the Met Council, Three Rivers Parks District, Maddy and the, the Woodland Cove Group. Um, the way we have it set up right now in the, the development agreement with, with two different options. One being that the, the city, the developer and Woodland Cove, um, what we're working on right now is exploring different options. And one option is to have that the Met Council undertake construction of Lotus Drive as part of the L thirty-eight project. That obviously is not ideal, because that's out to twenty twenty-one. Woodland Cove LLC, Maddy don't, do not really wanna see this delayed. So the second and probably the most preferred option is to have the developer construct Lotus Drive in twenty eighteen and do the interceptor lines for the Met Council. Um, it, the idea being the Met Council would pay their portion of the project. The city and the Met Council would enter into a cooperative agreement, which would outline the framework of, of that payment. Um, and then the city would also enter into a substantive agreement with Maddy, which details a lot more of this Lotus Drive reconstruction. So a month or so ago, we uh had a meeting with all of the various groups at one table. A lot of this framework is already put in place. There's a draft cooperative agreement that city staff's working on with the Met Council that we hope to, to bring to you uh in the not-so-distant future. Um, that will hopefully work out all of these details. The, the benefit of, of what's going on right now is the Met Council already has plans put together for the L thirty-eight project. They have construction plans for Lotus Drive and the, the interceptor lines that go underneath it. So, um, you know, the idea being that Maddy can just take, take those plans that Met Council's put together, put them out for bid. And the idea is we have all of this worked out and uh agreements put in place by construction season of twenty eighteen. So in the spring of twenty eighteen, uh, Maddy's contractor, whoever was successful in getting the bid uh for the, for the Lotus Drive portion can go ahead and start work as soon as possible in the spring of, of twenty eighteen. This gets constructed with the interceptor lines underneath it, so that a brand-new road does not have to get ripped up uh again and with taxpayers' dollars and that uh it's inspected by the city.
Well, the Lotus Drive project isn't taxpayer dollars. That's Maddy and Woodland Cove, right?
Correct, but if, so Madam Mayor and council, worst-case scenario is we can't figure out a way to get the Met Council interceptors lines under Lotus Drive and the developer and Woodland Cove wants to reconstruct Lotus Drive next year, which is possible. That's, that's a possible worst-case scenario. So we as a city, um, you know, might, may have to allow for that to happen. And when I say a waste of taxpayers' dollars, what I'm referring to is if that road goes in without those interceptor lines and it's gonna get ripped up
Right.
in twenty twenty-one by taxpayers' dollars.
I see, from Met Council. Yeah, okay.
That's doing it.
Yeah.
And putting back a three-year-old road.
Yeah.
That we said you could put in.
Yeah, I, I, yes, I was thinking you, you meant Minutrista taxpayers, so, no, okay. Gotcha. All right.
So again, uh, a lot of moving parts. Um, the best language that we could come up with, uh, that everyone could agree to is what's being presented to you in the subdivision agreement. Uh, working with, with Andrew and Mr. Beatty on this, we, you know, I think Andrew can, can speak for them too. But I, I think that, uh, we're comfortable from a city's standpoint, a city position, there's plenty, there's a lot of different dates in there, as you'll see. Uh, a lot of different thresholds where we feel like, from a city standpoint, obviously, we're looking out for, from the city's point of view and all of this. Um, and I think we've got, you know, finally got to a place where, um, again, it's not ideal, but there's a lot of moving parts with it that we're just gonna have to continue to work on as this moves forward.
What's the driving force to do it now? I mean, what, why do they wanna do it now versus waiting till twenty-one?
Well, I mean, there's a contractual agreement between Maddy and Carlson, um, or Woodland Cove LLC that requires them to do the improvement along with Woodland Cove, the third phase. Um, again, there's an option of, of paying their fair share of it and, and delaying it further. Um, but, um, from a, from a marketing standpoint, I think from a cost standpoint, um, Woodland Cove LLC is, um, wanting to see this done uh next year. As you, as you know, uh, you know, there's this, Maddy's in charge of the third, third phase and there, this is the last phase then they're in charge of. You know, so essentially, you know, they're, you know, would, would be leaving the, the state per se. So I think there, there's a, a number of reasons, um, why Woodland Cove LLC wants to see it getting improved.
Okay. Yeah, a lot of moving parts. Okay, Mr.?
So Met Council would not be putting it in the
The interceptor lines.
Right.
Right. They'd be, they'd be a part of it through every step. Um, they'd be, uh, you know, they'd be reviewing the, the bids that come in. They'd need, they, along with us, the city, would need to approve the bid that Maddy is going to accept to do the work. They would, um, be inspecting it throughout all the process of it being constructed. And then they eventually have to sign off and accept the improvement. So yes, they wouldn't be doing it, but they'd be a part of it throughout our, every, every step of the way.
So why aren't they just, they're doing almost everything, I guess, why aren't they just doing it then? I mean, it's so
Well, they're, they're not doing the construction part.
Right.
They're only paying to put the pipe in the ground.
So the idea with County Road forty-four project coming in, we asked, why can't you just, you know, incorporate it as part of that project? They're going to, County Road forty-four, right here is the construction limit of their project here. They're gonna turn and head through Three Rivers Park District. Can't you just include this in as part of the, the project? Uh, and unfortunately, they could not. Um, by the time we got everyone to the table, they had already put that County Road forty-four project out for bid. Um, so it would have delayed County Road forty-four project even further. Um, and, and so they couldn't, couldn't do that. Um, the, the reason they're not, um, it's too small for them to do on their own and it's part of, this, this is part of the much bigger project, the, the L thirty-eight project that goes all the way down to, to Saint Bonnie Interceptor. And I don't know, Paul, off the top of your head, how many million-dollar project is that?
It's significant. I mean, it runs all the way down.
It's, yeah, it's way up there. I, I don't even remember, but I mean
Fifty million?
Yeah.
I don't recall the cost.
Yeah, you know, so it's easier said than, than done for, for them just to do it. But, you know, like I said, they're, they're, um, they're willing, and this has been done before, not in the city of Minutrista. There's been other projects that they've done similar things, the Met Council that is, has done this with other cities. So we're, we are somewhat comfortable that we can get there. We can get the end result that we're all looking for. It's just the detail of working all that out. They, as they said, they, they have the money to do it. It's just a, it's a scheduling, you know, County Road forty-four got moved up in the priority list. So they can't take on that many million-dollar projects that close together.
Mr. Malater, did you have questions?
Uh, I did have questions. It wasn't specifically about option A or B.
Okay.
Um, but I'll bring it up at this point. Uh, one thing that I would like to see in this piggyback sort of discussion I believe we had actually at the last meeting uh pertains to page one fifty-five of the packet. Um, Streets, Section seven. Section seven C specifically. We talked about this last time when we were talking about pavement management and about when a developer comes in and does something. I'll let you get there, yeah, there you go, section C. We're talking about the streets shall be completed as no later than the date of completion, well, that section right there. We had talked about, I mean, Paul specifically had talked about the issues where we run into when a development comes in. We put in the base course of kind of pavement. The houses aren't all done, the wear course comes in too early and it gets torn up. And this, this is a prime example of that right here. We're saying, oh, let's see, the final wear course of Batuminus on the streets shall not be completed until two-thirds of the houses within the subdivision have been depleted or October first, two thousand nineteen, whichever comes first. That's, this is exactly what we're talking about. And my concern is, I suspect that October first, two thousand nineteen's gonna come much quicker than two-thirds sales of the homes. And what I'd like to see from this is have the October first, two thousand thirteen, nineteen date stricken from there and just say, complete it when two-thirds of the homes are done. So that we don't run into this issue where we've got, you know, like in Red Oak where we've got less than half the homes built and the wear course is on and the things being torn up. Can we just go with two-thirds of the homes and say, when that threshold's met, then we put the wear course on?
Well, I quit, kinda going one step further, why wouldn't we do the wear course when all the construction is done? I mean, is that...
You get into this ongoing battle about replacing crack curb, crack sidewalk for two or three years. Which is also one of the reasons why the city doesn't plow these subdivisions. Because you get into that argument. And so the plow damage in this scenario is the developers to repair. The longer you leave that wear course off, the more of that you're gonna get. That's one of the bigger items. It's also a reason why we have the developers put up an escrow for, for a seal code so that when the construction is nearly complete in there, then we can go ahead and seal code the roadways. So that helps cover up most of the, I wouldn't say the roads are being torn up there. You'll get scars, you'll get some tracking. An example would be some builder, a subcontractor to the builder comes up and offloads, offloads equipment that's tracked and they offload it on the road rather than offloading it. Which does happen. And that is hard to police, other than inspecting the road before the permit is approved and do it otherwise. While maybe some builder who's four blocks down comes and offloads in front of somebody else's lot and locks the machine down. It's, it's, it's hard to track that and how hard to police that. So that's what, some of the things we try to put in place, adding that seal code later to try to cover up some of those marks. So we tend to delay that, you know, we were looking at putting Woodland Cove, the first edition on the seal code list this, for twenty eighteen. But there's probably enough activity in there and we won't do that.
But what about Mister Malater's comment about taking out October nineteenth and just saying two-thirds, one-third, whatever the third is?
I think I have to have David chime in on that versus, you know, I guess I can't tell you how long it's gonna take them to fill this phase out.
Right, that's, that's why I want to take the date out. I don't care if it takes them ten years, just two-thirds. If they get two-thirds done in the first year, hey, we'll probably do it. But I think having a date in there is just...
Well, Madam Mayor, Council, I mean, it, it becomes a balance as, you know, there, there are developments. I mean, Hunter's Crest, I mean, they're just now getting to the last few lots in Hunter's Crest. That was originally planted in nineteen ninety-nine.
Right.
We, we don't, and, and so the problem, what starts happening here, we, we don't plow the streets until they put the final wear on. And I guess maybe that's, that's another discussion, maybe we've gotta talk about that. You've, you've got tax-paying citizens living in your city going, you're not plowing, I, I've lived here for how many years? And I, I, you're not gonna run up snowplow down, down my street? How is emergency service vehicles gonna get in and out? I mean, that, that's one, one element of it. Two is, is, is it realistic to think we're gonna wait ten years to, to put the final wear on?
I, I get that, and that's part of why I wouldn't, to your point, Mayor, about why two-thirds versus a hundred percent. That's exactly why I wouldn't do a hundred percent, because to your point, yeah, if you waited a hundred percent, you would have, it could be ten years and it, that would be fair.
Well, Hunter's Crest has been seventeen.
Well, seventy could be, could be indefinite, I mean, if one house doesn't sell, right?
Well, right.
Right, that's why I wouldn't go a hundred percent.
And, and that's, I just asked, yeah.
But so, but I think, so I think the two-thirds is fine, I'm, I'm comfortable with two-thirds. But I think the time limit, October first, two thousand nineteen is, is, you know, if they're just built, getting this going next spring, eighteen...
Talking eighteen months.
Yeah, getting two-thirds sold out, that's not, that's a pretty aggressive schedule. If, if we can't take the date out, I think it should at least be pushed out.
Well, I was, I was gonna say, maybe just pushing it out a little bit.
But I think, again, to my point is, I, the dates kind of, I mean, as long as we don't go a hundred percent, which I would never advocate doing, but as long as we don't put a hundred percent in there, I don't even know why we put a date. Why don't just say two-thirds, you know?
Well, probably because of the same reasons that Mister Abel because mentioned that, I mean, hundred percent, two-thirds. If you don't get to that two-thirds in, let's say, five years, I mean, whatever, I mean, then you're sitting there with, as, as he said.
Right, but I think, that, I'd be more concerned about that scenario if we put a really high percentage. If we put eighty percent or ninety percent or a hundred percent, then I'd be concerned. But two-thirds, if you can't get two-thirds done in our, you know, let's say, five years. I mean, fine, if you wanna put five years on, I guess it's worth that. But I think, either way, it should be modified a little bit. This seems to be too tight.
Sure, but let me ask, so you put down the base course. How long can you wait or should you wait in order not to compromise the base course or the subgrade before you put the wear course down? That would be my question.
Well, that's an excellent question, and I think that's why we have the two-year time, timeframe on it, so you don't...
This is up to two years, though.
It's to nineteen, October twenty nineteen.
But they haven't even started building, they won't build for a year, for six months for sure.
Well, the, the roads are going in right now. I mean, that, I, I mean, that's, I mean, the, the roads are gonna be there. And they're putting utilities, grading at the utilities you're in by spring of, early spring of next year. I mean, they could be pulling building permits. How, I mean, it depends on how much longer you get to work, but it's, it's two years from when we entered into the agreement and they're, they're already working on it. I mean, it's, it's not about the home construction, it's about how long the road's sitting there with the grade.
That's, that's what I'm asking is...
Well, I was, the next thing I was gonna bring up is that you will have, depending on how long, if you're using the Hunter's Crest or the Red Oak situation, if you've got, one, you first lift a Batuminus on, you, you can start getting some over heavy loads over time, you can start getting some yielding in your pavement and then that's a totally different animal to, to prepare. Now you're taking pavement out, reconstructing your area base and reconstructing the road. So I wouldn't recommend you keep, that you keep it on, off indefinitely for that reason either.
No, I don't think we're talking about that, excuse me. We're running out of time here, we need to take a short break. So can we hold that thought and then bring it back? Cause we had to take a short break and then we'll be back in about three minutes. Five, five minutes, and no one leave. Including the technician. So we're back and we were discussing the development agreement, particularly the street. When, when the developer is required to put the wear course on. Mister Hornby, you were telling us how long the base course lasts before you start seeing stress on the base course.
Well, I was gonna talk around that question, actually. It's kind of a function of heavy commercial traffic on a roadway before you start yielding. And it's number of trips it takes over the pavement before you start getting deformation yield. So it's kind of a hard question to answer. I think when you start looking at a two-year period for a development before you put the wear course on, is a reasonable timeframe.
Okay, so is the base course on today?
No.
Okay, so could you say then, two years from the time the base course is on?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council, another idea to tie it, try to tie it more specifically to building permits, given that, you know, they're working on it now, is we could tie it to two years from the first building permit being submitted.
Okay.
So, you know, what, it's gonna be spring of next year, they're working on it now. We, we could tie, change the language to say that, uh, two years from the date of the first, the first building permit.
Well, the only question is, when is the base course going in? Is that gonna be next spring? Okay, so then you could tie it to that.
It'd be base, it'd be in May or June of next year.
Yeah. Or go two years from May or June, whenever, I would just say two years from the time that the base course goes in. Or, or two-thirds, whichever comes first.
Cause there's nothing going in before October.
Right, right.
Right. So, you know, if you wanna take two years from June first next year or two years from the first permit or something like that, with the two-thirds still in there...
Yeah, two-thirds.
That's a little bit more reasonable.
Or two years from the time the wear course is put in.
Sure, sure.
Okay, alright, alright, good. Anything else in the developer?
Madam Mayor, just to clarify, is, is it all of them or is it one or the other? Just to clarify what, you know, so you said base course or building permit, do you wanna do both?
Well, it would be two-thirds or, okay.
For sure, but then the question is, is it base course or is it from the time the building permit was issued?
Well, base course, because if the building permits are issued before they even get the base course in, which could potentially happen, I would say two years from the time the, the base course is installed.
Which we know won't be just spring.
Right, which we know will be May, June, kind of. But you could have building permits coming in in April, March, April. So I would say two years from the time the base course is installed. Okay, alright. Any other, and then you, you wanted option one or option two also included in the resolution? Or which one, I'm sorry? Yeah. Okay, you wanted option A.
Well, we have, as, as it's written, Madam Mayor, Council, I mean, both options are included in the subdivision agreement.
Do you want A, one or the other? Okay.
Madam, Madam Mayor, Council, I mean, the, the rationale for putting them both in, in the contract is because we're not sure which one is going to be, which one's going to fall into place.
Okay.
So the way that it's designed as A is the prefer, or the preferable road, I think.
Okay, that's what I thought.
If that doesn't come into, into being, option B would be triggered.
Okay, so then one more question. Does the city still have the ability to approve the construction plans? I mean, because I know, okay, so this was way back in oh-nine or oh-eight, whenever it was. There was considerable discussion on the design of Lotus Drive. And I know that there is a lot of concern by some of the residents regarding Lotus Drive. So what I'm wondering is, I wanna make sure that those discussions and those, if you will, commitments are included in, in the design and construction of the new, of Lotus Drive. I don't want the, because that was way back in oh-nine, I don't want that to get lost in the shuffle.
Well, Madam Mayor and Council, the improvements in oh-eight, oh-nine with Lotus Drive were incorporated into the master development agreement. And really, I mean, we don't have much control over Lotus Drive because of, it's entirely within Three Rivers Park District. I guess that's the first thing. Secondly, I mean, the, the, the only improvements that were incorporated were limiting people from accessing the Trillium neighborhood at their, their street.
Right.
And then limiting the access out on seven a, as well. Limiting people from turning left onto County Road forty-four that they'd have to take a right. So there's, there's supposed to be a median on, in, within Lotus Drive.
On forty-four?
The median would be on Lotus Drive.
On Lotus Drive.
Into Trillium.
But when you're going, if you're on Lotus Drive going out to forty-four, you can make a right or a left.
Correct.
Okay. It's just, when you're on Lotus Drive, you can't make a left into Trillium.
Trillium, correct.
Okay, that's one thing. Okay, and the other thing too, and I believe this came from Three Rivers Park District, was the, the road width was supposed to be maintained as currently, as it is currently. I think it's, it's a narrower width. Okay, alright. I just wanna make sure that those, those things are in that plan because I know the residents were very concerned about that. Okay. Anything else? Alright. So Council, what is your pleasure? I need a motion to either approve or not, but hopefully approve. I know it's been a lot of work with staff and, and the developer and the Woodland Cove Third Edition subdivision agreement with the changes that we were, that we just talked about. So moved, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, motion was made by Ms. Thol and seconded by Mister Malater. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, I know this is a lot of work. Thank you very much, staff and developer, for enduring this two hours with us. Alright, so next we move on to our staff reports, our city administrator.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, I don't have many things to talk about. Just a couple, city offices will be closed on Friday, November tenth. It's Friday in accordance of the Veterans Day holiday, which is actually Saturday. So thank you to veterans for your service to our country, that's the reason for the holiday. And then our next meeting will be on Monday, two weeks from tonight, November eighteenth.
Okay.
I need a volunteer for Parks and Planning Commission.
Twenty, I'm sorry.
Park, um, November.
When is Parks?
That would be the next Tuesday.
I think I can take it, let me double check.
Otherwise...
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth, oh, I don't, I'd have to check my calendar.
I can't do the fourteenth.
I can, I can do the fourteenth.
Okay.
Otherwise, um, yeah, I have to check my calendar, but, didn't you just do Parks?
Yeah, but I can do it.
Okay, alright.
And I need, Planning Commission is on the twenty-seventh.
It's after Thanksgiving.
Yep.
The Monday after Thanksgiving, I think I might be able to do that. You can put me down for that and, and I just have to, I have to look at my schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Unless somebody else is dying to do it, no.
Alright.
And then Planning Commission does not meet in December, correct?
Correct.
Right.
And how about Parks?
We shouldn't, no, we shouldn't need to, um, this will be the last meeting of the year for them as well.
Alright, alright, so...
Paul, I think you have a couple of updates.
So we had quite a bit of a conversation about the House Drive and, and also talked about Enchanted Lane at the work session, but both of them are scheduled to be paved this week. Unless something happens, otherwise we don't see in the forecast, so... Contractor does wanna get it paved in both instances, both contractors want these projects done. And Councilman Malater also asked about Grandview Avenue, that's to follow the Enchanted paving. So they should be grading that one starting tomorrow and look at paving Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay, great.
And we do have some development projects going on for Woodland, they're there, working on that sanitary sewer coming from Lotus Drive area to, to the west. And then Woodland Cove Lake Second Edition is under construction as well.
Oh, wow, okay.
So two subdivisions out there. Dutch Lake Knoll, Second Edition, that one is nearly complete. We're working with the developer to get record plans and then get, at least that one punchless left and left. And then it's Woodland Cove and Woodland Cove Lake First Edition that I want, I'm trying to close out this year, so...
Okay, when you say Woodland Cove First Edition, which one is that? Trying to remember.
That is the first one, took up kind of that larger middle part.
Okay, okay.
So they've got their punchless completed, they've got their record plans in for both, for Madam E for the Woodland Cove and then Carlson Development, Woodland Cove LLC for the lake edition, for lake first edition.
Alright.
Lake First Edition still has one item that needs to be taken care of. They've, the contract, it's a contractor issue and we're not gonna close that one out until it's resolved, so...
Then the only other thing was the Maslow ski, segment four, probably.
Yeah, that's done.
Got done in a week.
Yeah.
So they started on a Monday, they finished on a Friday. We're just kinda haggling over some quantities right now, but planning to bring the pay voucher, final pay voucher to the next meeting.
And it looks nice. It's that fourth edition for the Westwood Drive drainage.
So it's the part between County Road one-ten north and Westwood Drive.
Yeah, it looks very nice.
It, it turned out really well, they did a nice job of it.
Okay.
The whole one was happy.
Good, alright. Any other staff? Otherwise, we'll move on to Council, we'll start with Ms. Bruce.
I don't have anything.
Okay, and Mister Malater?
Uh, LMCD is this week.
Okay.
WCC, they wanted me to let everybody know that the 34th Annual Tree Lighting Event goes on November 18th, and it's from 5:30 to 7:30 at Mount Harbor District Veteran Park. And they will have holiday music, horse drawn hayrides, choirs, and vendor booths, bonfire, and all kinds of fun stuff. And Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus are arriving on the fire engine. So that's all.
Okay.
I attended the Planning Commission meeting on October 23rd. There was just one item on the agenda, which was a variance that the, after a fair amount of discussion, the Planning Commission tabled it, and it will be brought back at the meeting in November.
Okay. So I did attend the MCWD Awards Celebration. The keynote speaker was Paul Douglas, always great speaker, and Jordana Green with WCCO was EMC, and was able to, yeah, have a good evening and do some networking and talk with a couple other mayors and council people and so on. So, and then I also had a meeting with staff and Headham County Appraisers, interesting information. And one other thing, I've received a number of emails concerning Airbnbs and VRBOs, and I know we talked about this before, but I, I, I've said, well, what I'll do is I'll bring this up again. If the council has a desire to revisit this issue, maybe we can put it on a February, January, February work session for more discussion. It's, their concern is, their concern is, and this pertains more regarding Lakeshore property, because a lot of, a lot of people are buying and investing in Lakeshore property specifically for Airbnb and, and vacation property rentals. And so, and that's becoming more prevalent, not just in our community, but in other communities as well. And so the question is, and I know we talked about this, I, I know we've already visited this, so I said, I would ask if there's some interest. I guess the question is, you know, what are the adverse effects for our community for this? What does it do to a neighborhood if you had three or four Airbnbs in the neighborhood? How does it affect the neighborhood? What do we want to do, if anything? And, and so on. So is that something we want to talk about again in more depth? I know we talked about it briefly in one council meeting.
I, I remember when we talked about it, the numbers at the time just didn't warrant doing anything, because we had just a handful of, of places that rented to other people. And I think there's been a lot of stuff in the news recently. In fact, there was a murderer in some other states, and I think some media hysteria has been sort of churning out there about it. And so I think that might be where some of the interest is coming from and why people are asking questions about it, but...
Well, no, this is coming from residents who are right next door to a brand-new Airbnb.
Okay, well, if our numbers have changed since we talked about it before, it might be worth approaching again, but I'm not, I'd like to know if our numbers have changed. How many places do we have?
Well, that's the question, yeah. It's hard to, I know before we said there were about a handful, 12, a dozen, 13 maybe. So have, if that's changed, I don't know. If there's now 14 or 20, I don't know. But I think the, the other thing that we should be looking at is the future. What will, I mean, if we don't do anything right now, then more and more are going to come in. They're going to, no, no doubt about it. I don't think it's so much of an issue in the rural area, because homes are spread so far apart, you probably wouldn't even know if, if it was an Airbnb or what, you know. But I think more the issue is, especially on the lake, what is that going to do for neighbors and neighboring values and that kind of thing. That's, I think, the bigger issue and the bigger question. And then the other thing is, is if we don't do anything now and a whole bunch pop up, let's say in the next two or three years, then what? Then we may have a bigger issue on our hands, and it might be harder to control or to, how do you say, after the fact, create an ordinance after the fact.
And it, it might just be a temporary issue, too, because of the Super Bowl. And I think you're, we're going to see a lot of people renting out their homes because of that, so...
We're not talking about that, yeah.
Could just be a temporary situation, too.
I think where we left off the last time we discussed it was that we were going to monitor it on a ordinance-type basis. If, if the people that are in the home are breaking a noise ordinance or disturbance of some sort, then we would address it that way. The two questions or points that I thought of as, as you presented it for discussion again or consideration is, at what point do people who, an individual who owns the home have a right to do with the home what they want, rent it out periodically? I don't have as much of a concern about that as I do if people are actually purchasing the house on the lake for the purpose of an investment and renting it out.
That's what they're doing.
Then it's, then it's a business.
Yeah.
It's not a home. And, and so I don't know if there's any sort of regulation over that sort of situation.
Well, and that's the case here. It's, it was purchased by a number of individuals specifically and solely to rent it out. And I'm sure we, and most Airbnbs, I shouldn't say most, but a lot of them on the lake are like that. They, they purchase them solely to rent out. I know there's one on Minneapolis Avenue. I know there's several, yeah, it's not where the people live there. And yes, a lot of people in the metro area are going to be doing the house rental for the Super Bowl. I'm not talking about that. That's a one-time deal. They did that for the Hazeltine, you know, for the golfing event, and I'm not talking about that. I don't, I don't think that's going to be an issue. That's a one-time deal, that's a week-long, whatever. But do we want to revisit?
I'd be interested in that.
Revisiting it?
Yes.
Sounds like, like there's a little more discussion that could take place around it so, and to actually have it in a work session as opposed to reports of what we've done over, since our last meeting. It seems like that would be the appropriate time to allocate time.
Yeah.
To discuss it more.
I'm not saying we're going to create an ordinance, but on the other hand, I think we, we could use some more information. And, and then our residents who are out there that are concerned about this will at least know that we're listening to them and that we're, we're going to consider something and we'll discuss it, and they can actually come to the meeting when we discuss it if they want.
That's fine.
So, with that, I would say, and I did mention that this isn't going to happen overnight. Maybe it's going to be February or March at a work session. Would you prefer February or March?
I have that far ahead of me, I apologize, so...
I'm just trying to give you a date or timeline, so...
Well, can you say first quarter, and we'll...
A first quarter, okay.
You'll be okay with that?
Yeah, all right, first quarter. All right. With that, that concludes my reports. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
I do have a question.
Oh, yep.
I noticed there's a stormwater meeting on the 14th posted out here. What's that about?
Well, that's our MS4 permit. We have to hold the...
We have to post that.
Post it.
We'll hold a meeting, and no one usually shows up to it, but formally we have to per our municipal permit.
I did get a question from the Hunter's Crest Association in terms of what we're doing with the stormwater ponds and how that's going to work. And I said that we're doing the swamp, and that once that comes forward, we'll kind of know more. And then I thought our discussion was that we would then send out information or invite homeowners association people to come in so we can share the information with them and tell them what they need to do or how they need to do it. Is that...
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts that could issue, but once we get the swamp, we'll be, hopefully bring in something to council for their consideration.
Right.
Game plan.
Right, okay. All right, so that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Malater and seconded by Ms. Thol. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Thank you.